Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone this morning on behalf of the Commissioners and the staff. We're glad you could be with us. And let's have our call to order. Our so order. Let's have our roll call, and I've been informed that this technology once is ready to go. Let's try it.
What do we put?
What we put?
Match one, Mary.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Looks like it did work, Madam Attorney.
Yeah, yeah. Too right.
All right. Now, let's all stand, and we'll have our invocation and pledge, please.
At least so far.
Your bow and your heads. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Pitt County. Please guide us today as we make decisions for our citizens and help us to be led in the right direction. Amen.
Amen.
Please take, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, read the vote.
And no vote would be what?
Number two. Number one is yes, number two is no, three is abstain.
Mary, Mary, there we go.
We got it now, all of us.
All right, Mr. Manager, what's next?
First item you have on the agenda is Employee Service Awards and a reception following. If we can go down front, and we'll proceed.
Our HR Director, Florida Hardy, will come up and join us to assist us.
This morning, as we do on a quarterly basis, we recognize our workforce for their tenure with Pitt County Government, and we'll be recognizing employees, everything from a five, 10, 15, 20, and 25-year category today. So we'll start with a five-year category, and we'll call the names. We can hold the applause until the end of the categories. That'll help us to move along. So we have Daniel Bissett, 911 Communications. Again, five-year employees. Joseph Collins, Detention Center. James Evans, Communications, could not attend. Dolores Farmer, Planning Department.
No more.
Okay, we'll come back to her. Vicki Gentry, Detention Center. Jason George, MIS, Management Information Services. Jessica Heath, Public Health. Dennis Hines, Detention Center, could not attend. Stephen Morgan, Sheriff's Office. Walter Strickland, Detention Center. Guadalupe, Guadalupe, Villa Cruz. Alaska Cruz, thank you. Could not attend. In our last five years, to Adam Wainwright, Sheriff's Office. All right, if we can have a round of applause. Recognizing ten years of service with Pitt County Government, we have Karen Barrett, Russell Hill, Tax Administration. Marcia Perkins, Sheriff's Office.
March.
In our last 10 years, to Shemitrus Ridley, Social Services. Okay, round of applause. We have four employees in the 15-year category. William Beaman, Social Services. Otherwise, Scott Beaman, I guess. Courtney. Courtney Kohler, Detention Center. Phyllis Neal, Public Health.
Thank you. I'm most delighted to.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And our last 15 years is to Alfred Walden, Sheriff's Office. All right. All right, in the 20-year category, we have six employees listed, and we have six boxes on the table. And in each box is the 20-year recognition the employee has received. 20 years with Pitt County Government, the employee is given the opportunity to select a watch of their choice, up to a certain dollar range that we provide. So we always kid that this is the 20-year watch to watch the next 10 years tick by until he gets to 30. So Lisa Arnold, Sheriff's Office. Amanda Hoffener, MIS. Charles E. Mitchell, Sheriff's Office, otherwise known as Scooter. Okay, Michelle Moore, Sheriff, Social Services, could not attend. Sarah Newton, Social Services.
She looks like a young lady.
And our last 20 years, Celia Williams, Public Health.
Thank you.
All right, applause. In our last category, 25 years, we have about seven employees. We have Philip B. Everett, otherwise known as Brian, from Social Services. Janet Bunch, Public Health. Johnny Goff, Detention Center. Evelyn Knight, also known as Cheryl, Detention Center. Cynthia Ross, Social Services. And our last category, our last award of the morning under the 25-year category is Billy F. Smith, Detention Center. We will now have a reception, and everybody in the audience is welcome to attend. If you'll attend through the left door here, there's food and beverages behind. Just if you'll get it, come back out and sit down, and we'll take a break for a few minutes while we have the reception. Thank you.
Lead the way.
Thank you.
We're now by concession. Mr. Manager, do you have any public addresses to the board?
Yes, sir. We have two people signed up. We have Susan, pronouncing this last name right, Settlemy, Settlemeyer. She'll come forward and give her name and address if she's still in the audience. If not, we can move on and then come back to her.
Go ahead to the next one.
Hillary Maddox. Again, she must be up in the hallway too.
Oh.
All right, you have Susan Settlemeyer. If I'm saying that last name correctly, she'll come to the podium for public addresses to the board. You give us your name and address, please. And the Attorney will read our policy on public addresses.
Yes, Pitt County Government welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. If you'll state your name and address before you speak, I'll keep your time at three minutes.
Susan Settlemeyer, and I live at 2102 Mayor's Way. I own the property there in Woodmore subdivision. And the reason that I'm here is that I definitely have an objection to the roads situation with the assessment for the roads. My understanding was that we have, they were supposed to get 75 percent of signatures. I didn't think that that had happened. And I have an objection to the assessment for the roads.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your presentation. Next.
Okay, next we have Hillary Maddox.
I'm Hillary Maddox. I also own the farm at 2102 Mayor's Way, and I as well have an objection to the roads. Again, we were told that the 75 percent, everybody that I know in the neighborhood, again, I own the largest lot in the neighborhood, did not agree to sign this, so I'm not really sure where the 75 percent came from. Again, everybody I've talked to has said that they did not sign it. My other understanding is that it's a loan that we are going to be charged interest a loan that we are going to be charged interest on. So I'm not really sure how you can force somebody to take out a loan that could potentially negatively affect their credit on roads that they don't own. So that's my objection.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your presentation.
Anybody else in the audience who'd like to come forward? If not, Mr. Chairman, if I can just make a point. The US of Board of Commissioners on June the 18th did pass the final assessment resolution, and we did have 75 percent of the property owners who signed petition. That was verified. And this is not a loan. This will actually be a, on the tax bill for the property owners over for a tenure period if they choose to pay it for 10 years. So if they sell the property, it will actually go with the property and be an encumbrance on that property, per se. With that, Mr. Chairman?
Your report.
Okay, item's report. First item is my report as manager. First item you have on the agenda is your next meeting dates in the month of August, for August 6th and August 20th. On the 6th, you'll have a regular meeting at 9:00 a.m., 20th at 6:00 p.m. Item B on the agenda regarding the upcoming NACO Conference, that's the National Association of Counties Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, actually starting this coming weekend. We've had a travel exception request by Commissioner Farley. Three commissioners per year travel policy indicated they want to attend. Commissioner Farley is saying he wants to attend. And in order for us to be able to, for me to be able to process the expenditures, I need the consensus of the board to allow him to do that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Well, just a minute. He started. Go ahead, John.
Yes, yes. Mr. Manager, this is not a normal request. I am scheduled to make three presentations on committees that I'm serving, one of them as an officer. So I feel that the board, in this rare occasion, should allow me to go to do this. And as I'm not running for reelection, it'll be my last, my last meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Excuse me, not Beth.
Mr. Chairman, we have a policy in place. I know it was well over five years ago because of some concerns, and it serves for, other than in-state conferences and attendance. And we have stuck to that policy pretty closely. So I would like to make a motion that we continue to adhere to and respect this policy for attending conferences and meetings passed over five or six years ago, with no exception as requested.
Second.
All right, discussion now. Scott called me back a few days ago regarding this. At our last meeting, we voted for three delegates to go, as I recall. If that's not correct, you correct me.
Well, we identified three commissioners who were attending per your policy, and you voted on the voting delegate. I think Ann Huggins was voted to be the voting delegate at the conference.
All right, but the three were set up under the regular rules that we have provided by. But I got a call from Scott that Charles had made reference to what he just said a while ago, that he'd like to go. And Scott apprised me of the cost of that. I said, well, normally I feel we need to follow the rules, but polled the board. My understanding was that Scott polled the board. And then when he conversed with me again about it, it was a positive vote on the board that was proposed. Is that correct, Scott?
Correct.
Now, if that be the case, and the board has with consensus or agreed for Mr. Farley to go on this, I think the board ought to honor its, did you address, did you tell Mr. Farley that the board had approved it?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah, I concur with the chairman on this. I think this exception should be honored. Do I need to make a substitute motion, override this?
No, no, you just be quiet right now, Charles. But with that having been said, Ann, you raised your hand.
Well, you know, I'm the new person on the board. So, and when I asked to go to an in-state meeting, and that was in Greensboro, and it was then that I learned your policy that you, that you don't, whatever you agreed on at the very beginning, and those conferences that you agreed upon, those are the only ones that you will adhere to. So, and you said there were some statements made that there was an abuse of travel, so that's why you made this policy. Well, you know, I'm just coming on, so naturally, I had not abused the policy, and neither had my predecessor because of his disability. So he, you know, he didn't travel much. So I really was taken back by the denial based on your policy, you know. And that was not an out-of-state meeting, it was in-state. So, so anyway, you know, as I said, you know, if you have, that's what happens when I ask to go to Greensboro to a meeting. And so if you're going to have a policy, then, or maybe you need to look at your policy again. I don't know. But as a new person, I felt the blunt of that policy with a meeting that I wanted to attend, and it was an in-state meeting. So I just want to register that concern.
Mr. Garrison, thank you. Had you finished, didn't you?
Yes.
Mark, Scott called me also, and when he called me, I had not given it a whole lot of thought, so I did agree. But after thinking about it, and thinking that we had told Ann that we were going to abide by the policy, and she was denied her request, and then we do have a policy, so I have since given that a second thought. And I think that we should abide by the policy and certainly treat everyone consistently. So I will be voting for this motion that has been made and seconded.
Beth, your motion was to deny Mr. Farley's request, is that what you wanted?
Yes, and to respect our policy and adhere to it that has been in place for many years.
Any further discussion? Now, Charles, get back to when you said that you wanted to make a motion, but I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth or take them out.
No, not at all, Mr. Chairman, but Commissioner Williams, did you second that to deny me?
I second Beth's motion.
To support the motion.
To support the motion that I could not go.
Correct.
Okay, because I had asked you earlier, and you said you thought I should go.
Well, I said I would second the motion.
Wrong motion, okay.
Any further discussion?
Afraid not.
All right, if not, all in favor of the motion indicate by, using your machine here.
One is yes, two is no.
So, all right. Next, Mr. Manager.
Okay, next we have, want to announce the inner-city visit for 2018 being put on by the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce. This is an inner-city visit to Spartanburg, South Carolina. And just to make the board aware, I think you received this in your weekly packet, this opportunity, if anybody wanted to go, there is a cost associated with it of $1,250 to pay for transportation, hotel, meals, and so forth. If, I know one commissioner, Perkins Williams, has indicated an interest in going. If that's the case, then obviously this is outside your travel policy. Speaking of travel policy, would need the board's consent. I plan to go on, going as staff. I've gone to one or two of the prior ones. Spartanburg is a community county that is being looked at as a model for Pitt County or Greenville metropolitan area to emulate, especially in light of economic development. So, didn't know if Commissioner Perkins-Williams wanted to make the request of the board to attend, or anybody else. If so, again, it would be an exception to your travel policy.
Mary.
I'd like for the board to know that I've been very interested in economic development and the development of areas in Pitt County that are really blighted and have need for development. So since this was the first time the opportunity come up since I've been on the board, I'd like to go to this to see how we can compare and collaborate in this effort.
Any further discussion on this issue? If not, let's proceed on.
Is there consensus for her to go to attend the inner-city visit? Mr. Chairman?
I think you need a motion to approve that, based on what you just said about your rules and regulations.
Yes.
And I asked if there was any further comment. No motion was made, no second was made. So I suggest we move on.
Motion to approve?
All right. Got a motion made, is there a second to it? Motion dies for the lack of a second, let's move on.
Okay. Item D, speaking of conferences, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference is August 23rd through 26th. This per your policy, since it is an in-state conference, any and all commissioners would like to attend, per your policy, can attend. They'll let the clerk know. I think they may have already called board members to poll interest in attending, but just want to announce that, to have that on your calendars. The only other thing I have is not on the agenda, I'm gonna call this item E. Just wanted to give a brief update to Vice Chairman Webb's inquiry at the last meeting at the end regarding House Bill 284. That's the 25-year retirement for law enforcement officers. Legal has prepared a memo research on this. We are now looking at what potential cost to the county could be for this. Anticipate at the next meeting, probably having more detailed information for you. And just to clarify, it's my understanding, and Legal can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're talking about sworn law enforcement in terms of those who would be eligible for this retirement option. And on June the 18th, this had not yet been signed into law by the governor. Since then, I think it was June 22nd, it was signed. So this is now law and is an option for counties to consider. And Mr. Chairman, with that, that's all I've got on my report.
Okay, next.
Let me ask you a question about that. Scott, are you going to send out details on that as to what it is? What, I mean, what percentage do you retire at? Give us some details. I don't, you're asking me to approve something or agree to something blind.
No, I just want to let you know that we've done some work on it, and I didn't want you to think we were just kind of sitting on it. We do have a memo, but without the details of the numbers of how many employees, what it costs the health plan, what the cost to the LEO, the Law Enforcement Officers Retirement Fund, the impact, we're calculating impacts to those, depending upon what decision you as a board may make, whether you decide to participate in terms of.
Well, the basis of that is not necessarily, these guys, ladies, they risk their lives every day, and I understand that. But what my, my biggest concern is, is that your most experienced officers may be retiring. And, you know, there's a cost associated with that as well.
Absolutely.
Is this in the line, is this in the line with another bill coming down without funding? That's my question. Because we get a lot of bills that they make.
Good point, Mayor, but I believe.
They make law, and they don't send the money with it.
I believe you said it's coming back with you to the board on that. Does that answer your question, Tom?
Well, since he's gonna come back.
I just wanted to voice my concern, to put that into the mix.
All right. And did you speak to item number D under eight, Scott?
Oh, yes.
You did. All right, we're ready for number two.
Yes, if we'll ask Dr. Massey to come forward. Before he gives his report, Commissioner Ward and myself as manager wanted to make a brief presentation with Dr. Massey if he'll come down to the front.
Don't look surprised. I'm gonna have a pocket to put this in, so we don't see it right as I can let it down there. Dr. Massey, we've been very blessed in Pitt County to have you for how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen as president of our community college. And I have also had the opportunity for most of those years to serve as a liaison for the Pitt County Commissioners. There's no way I can go down the list, and, because it's so long, but what you brought to us in Pitt County, in the staff, the teachers, the administrators that you have hired, and the ones that were, you kept in place, and the phenomenal leadership you have given to them to allow them to make good decisions that have benefited this whole county and surrounding counties, because we have a lot of people who come in and stay after they have graduated. It takes good leadership to get good people to do the work that has to be done. And the legacy you're leaving here is astounding, and I thank you very much for that. And the county, this is just a small certificate of appreciation. You want to read it?
Sure. If I can add to Commissioner Ward's comments, the, I think the physical improvements to the campuses, the capital improvements have been extraordinary over your tenure too. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
So we have a certificate of appreciation to read, and it'll let Mr. Ward present it to Dr. Massey. It's entitled Certificate of Appreciation Awarded to Dr. G. Dennis Massey. In recognition of your serving as Pitt Community College's president, 2003 through 2018, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners recognizes the retirement and accomplishments achieved through partnership with Pitt County Government. Presented this ninth day of July 2018, signed by our chairman, Mark W. Owens, Jr.
Yes, thank you so much for everything you've done. We really appreciate it.
Is he gonna say something?
Okay.
He's fixing to tell you a story, just a minute, Mary.
Do you want to say anything, Dr. Massey?
Well, you can make your presentation. You've got your own mic.
Good morning, Dr. Massey.
Good morning, Chair Owens. Commissioners, thank you for having me here for this last occasion to address you and to speak in behalf of the board and the faculty and staff at Pitt Community College, and really offer my congratulations to you and your thanks, thanks to what you've done to help Pitt Community College fulfill our mission, which of course is very closely related to your mission. I look at the seal of the county, and I see education taking a very important role there. But what Pitt Community College has really done in the last few years is evolved into much more of an economic development tool and workforce development engine for our county and for our region. And I've just been lucky enough to be here during this period, and I think we've got a lot of momentum. What I'm going to share with you is primarily about the facilities that County Manager Elliott mentioned, and what you've helped to realize at Pitt Community College. I know many of you have been around in these parts much longer than me, and so you can remember the Tice Drive-In and, you know, all the activities and farmland that was out Reedy Branch Road. It has changed significantly, and you've been a big part of that. The first slide I want to show you is a 2016 slide. That is giving you pretty much close to what we have now. And I thought this was a striking slide because it shows the region there of Winterville and looking out to the west. You see the development across Memorial that actually is in the city. But, you know, it's been a great partnership that we've had, and thanks to the foresight of our Board of Trustees that purchased the Rebecca Davenport property across Swift Creek, we have great opportunities for future development across there. And you can't even see all the land we have, but it goes back to with easement on Davenport Farm Road. So I think that there will be a bright future for Pitt Community College, and we've made the most of opportunities that we have to provide programming for the area. This slide is one in 2009, and this is really when the development across Reedy Branch really started to get some steam. There was a point where the only thing across Reedy Branch Road was the Warren Building. I think that was built about three or four years before I started in 2003. But that Bowen Farm, is what it was always known as, has become a primary location for development. One thing that's not in these slides is the Greenville Center, and what an important role it has played as a center for continuing education on Memorial. And, you know, we do activities in a lot of other places, including north of the river and in Farmville, and even now in Bethel and Aiden. Oops. Okay, 2013, that's the year that we approved the bond referendum. That was when we went. That was when we went to the voters for a $20 million, $19.9 million bond referendum to support the Walter Williams Building, the Science Building, and the relocation of the basic law enforcement training facility to on the other side of Sam's Club where the Champions Fitness Center was. Again, that's not on this slide, but you can see the, on this slide very clearly what we were able to accomplish with the local sales tax funding. Remember, that was passed in 2007. Pitt County was one of the first states in the, in the, one of the first counties in the state to pass that quarter cent sales tax. We did it, working closely with the public schools and the Chamber of Commerce, and you were very supportive of that. I can remember that campaign very strongly. And what we were able to produce through the, those funds was the Construction Industrial Tech Building, the Russell Classroom Building, which has been a great addition, and the Facility Services Center. You can see in this slide those three facilities west of Reedy Branch Road, but as you see in this next one, you look west of Reedy Branch Road and you see not only those, but you see the beginnings of the, of the Williams Building that the 2013 bond resulted in. One thing I hadn't mentioned was the baseball field. That's been a great partnership, working with the American Legion, the local post, because they utilize that facility as well as our teams, and it's been a great asset for not only Pitt, but also the whole region. Okay, the Early College High School is the latest building that we've been able to work on. It's just about ready to open. It'll be opening later this month. You know, the Early College High School is a cooperative program with Pitt County Schools. We run a complete high school. It's a five-year program, starting in the ninth grade. At the end of those five years, students receive the associate degree as well as their high school diploma, and they've been a great addition to the campus. Fairly small population, right now it's close to 300. Eventually it'll be up to 375. But this facility has eight classrooms, and it was recently designed, and it's just in the process of being finished. We're very fortunate to have it, and it's located right next to the Science Building, the Williams Science Building. And that's the, that's the view from the Science Building. That previous slide was from the Loop Road, the Warren Drive. The Law Enforcement Center I mentioned before has been a great addition to the area close to campus, and I should say that Sam's Club has been cooperative with us in helping provide a little bit of parking, but it's really integrated what we do on campus more with what they do. And that's been a facility that served not only Greenville PD and the Sheriff's Office, but many of the local municipalities in terms of their law enforcement personnel. It has its own training center, obviously with its legacy as being a fitness center. And another facility that you have helped us develop along with the help of the Golden Leaf Foundation and the Economic Development Commission here in Pitt County is the Pharmaceutical Services Network. We've worked closely with East Carolina University, and there have been some good articles in the reflector recently about the accomplishments in terms of economic development that we've helped realize. This is located, our portion of it is located in the old prep shirt factory across the river on Green Street, and I think we're continuing to utilize that, that location very wisely. And with the growth of the biopharma workforce in our area, that will be increasingly more and more of a great resource for us. And we use this, by the way, not just for training the personnel at these local companies, but for also our pre-service people, recruiting people who are currently students at Pitt Community College. So it's, it's been a great, and this was the ribbon-cutting ceremony. There might be a few of you Commissioners in there. I saw Mike Taylor there on the side at the back there. It's, it was a great occasion when we got that started, and we've had several people in the biopharma area remark what impressive equipment that we have there. It really is industry standard. That's a picture of Mike, who's our primary contact and trainer there. Our latest project is the Eddie and Jo Allison Smith Center for Student Advancement. That will do even a greater job than what the Craig Goaz Student Center has done, to provide resources for our students, particularly for veterans. We'll have a women's center in there. We'll have much more facility space for meetings, and right now the Goaz Center is heavily used, and we'll have a little bit more flexibility once this center is finished. It will be about a 33,000 square foot facility in its first phase, about an $8.5 million cost. It will house the Vision Center that the Smith Foundation has been very instrumental in assisting with, men's, veterans', and women's centers also. This is a architect's rendering of this facility, and there's just two sides to that. And it will be located on Reedy Branch Road across from the Whitley Building, so it's to the, to the south a little bit of the campus. It's that yellow space closest to the Ring Road, to Warren Drive. That will be starting to occupy that, that Warren Building, that Bowen Farm a little bit more than what it is now even. And the other element, you notice next to that yellow block is the Design Workforce Center. The Design Workforce Center has been on the master plan for Pitt Community College for over 10 years, and it's commonly called in higher education a makerspace, and we'll have a lot of design programs from different disciplines, including graphic design. We'll have part of our cybersecurity program in that, our computer science, our architectural drawing, a lot of the design programs that don't usually affiliate with one another. That program, that facility is on our capital improvement list. It has been for the last several years. It's estimated about $15 million cost. It would be a great resource for the whole region. There aren't similar spaces like this, although the Innovation Center at East Carolina University is close to it. But we will be, we will be working hard on this, and I'll be working with my successor, President Lawrence Rouse, in providing him a lot of information about what would go into this facility. And the workforce context, the, the people that it will help train are even more diverse and needed than the people in the biopharma area. So what you see here is a development in, in directions that will assist our workforce in key areas we see in the, in the next few years, well, the next five to 10 years. So it's been a pleasure working for you, working with you. I like to think that one of the reasons I was hired in 2003 is because I did have experience working with county commissioners when I was in Wisconsin, much smaller school. By contrast, Pitt Community College is, is large, is comprehensive, and has, I think, done a very good job. And as I said, I've just been fortunate to be here, the right place at the right time, and working with a great team, and you've been part of that team. So thank you very much for your support. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for your service.
Next.
Okay, next, Mr. Chairman, you have a report from Alan Thomas with the North Carolina Global Trans Park.
Come right, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good to see y'all this morning.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. It feels like I was just here. Maybe it's been a little while, Beth, I don't know.
It has.
It is truly an honor to be here and a chance to speak before you today, and to me, it's like, kind of like coming home. It's good to see so many familiar faces, and it does seem like a blink of the eye. You know, we were here serving here together in Pitt County and moving this community forward, and now we've hopefully expanded to try to bring opportunities across a larger area in eastern North Carolina, and obviously with us working together in cooperation. But I also want to take a quick moment also to honor, as you have, Dr. Dennis Massey. I mean, what a tremendous legacy, and he's such a humble gentleman. I love people that their, you know, their deeds speak way louder than any of their words, and he is definitely an exemplary person for that. Looking at that slide chart from 93 to 20,000, 2018, it just really puts it in perspective, doesn't it, in terms of some of the improvements? And if you don't have a good, an ecosystem around education, you don't have anything. And that's something that I preached as mayor, and I continue to preach now with the Global Trans Park. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come here. It was last July when I left that role and was honored with the opportunity to, some will say, be careful what you ask for, you might get it, right? But what, what got my attention about making this change and this transition? I could have continued and put myself before the voters again and then served potentially again here in office as mayor, if the voters would have had me. But I really saw, looking at home, I have a 12-year-old, and I have a 10-year-old, and I have a 5-year-old. I know a lot of people around here have families, and I often hear about them talking where their kids are gonna live, where they're gonna grow up, where they're gonna make a future. And I want more of them to be talking about making a future right here in eastern North Carolina. I mean, I'm a son of this area. I grew up in these tobacco fields. I was born in Vanceboro, close by, and I love this part of the country. Many of us could have lived anywhere we wanted to in this nation, but we chose to raise our families here because we want opportunity here. That's why I did it. I know that sounds hokey, but that's what I'm excited about for eastern North Carolina. And let me tell you, I'm more excited today, what I'm about to show you, than what I came across when I had a chance to look at this closely and make that big decision. So we'll, we'll move forward and take a quick look here and a quick run-through. What you see here is the, that is the Antonov AN-124. That's the second-largest aircraft in the world. It is in and out of the Global Trans Park every other week. 112 flights in the past two years. It is six stories tall. It picks up goods and services that are built right here by eastern North Carolina workers, constructed right here with the most advanced technology in the world, and shipped over to Toulouse and France for final assembly. And no, that is not a Photoshop. That's also Air Force One, if you notice closely, flying over top of the Antonov, and actually, just a shot we happened to capture one day. We have over 22,000 touch-and-goes at this, at this facility every year. Every branch of the military, F-15s landing and utilizing this facility from Seymour Johnson, F-17s, Ospreys, from all over the eastern seaboard of the United States. Not Lenore County, not eastern North Carolina, the United States. This is why I moved here. This is the opportunity. And if I can wriggle this mouse here right, I'll give you a quick little glimpse. a significant amount of that workforce lives here in Pitt County, and I'll show you in a moment. The workforce is over 21 counties. 1,400 people work at the Trans Park currently. High skilled labor, former military, folks trained here at Pitt Community College, Lenore, Wayne, Craven, all over the region. The mission statement for the Trans Park, to enhance the economic well-being of North Carolinians by providing multimodal capabilities for global commerce, global opportunity right here in eastern North Carolina, and this is a state asset. Now, when I, when I chose to take on this opportunity and to be able to move forward with this, I was met with a mandate by the state legislature, and working closely with Chairman Torbit and Chairman Davis with the Joint Legislative Oversight Commission Transportation, the thing they impressed upon me is that while Pitt County is doing well, marginally well, and Greenville is doing well, much of eastern North Carolina is on dangerous grounds. We need improved infrastructure. We need connection to the global grid. We've seen other rural areas in South Carolina, in Georgia, in Virginia, Florida, the Midwest that have made the transition of an economy. Eastern North Carolina has all the ingredients to make that happen. We just have to get together on a cohesive strategy. That's what we have got to do. The things that we have here across the east. So they tasked me with, come forward with a strategic plan, talking about working this region together. Put marketing forward. This facility hasn't been marketed in decades. They don't even know we're here in other parts of the world, which I found out over the past few months in my travels and working to promote eastern North Carolina. And also your web presence. You need to have a strong web presence, whether you're in any form of business, and this is a private enterprise business that we compete in. 90% of the decisions are made about whether they're even gonna call you based on what they see, without you even knowing on your web presence. You're checked off the list if you don't have strong connectivity, if you can't present yourself forward 24/7. A little bit about the current layout of the facility. 2,500-acre multimodal park, the Global Trans Park asset itself, 5,800 acres that are shovel-ready. There's a 404 permit for this area, which is, which, one of the things that most impressed me about this, you can literally be moving dirt in 30 days in a 5,800-acre circumference around that Trans Park. That's a tremendous advantage for economic development. Hasn't even been marketed. But when companies want to come in, many times they're having to understand it's gonna take them 18 months to two years to acquire property and pull things together. We're gonna be a, what I call, as you know, a mega site that we've heard in other parts of the state people talk about. We're gonna get that done, that permitting and qualification, right here within 25 minutes of where we're standing right now. It takes me from where I live, 23 minutes door-to-door to get to work every day in the Trans Park when they're not dragging me to Raleigh. But it's something that I, you know, huge opportunity here across the east. 5.8 miles of rail, I want to mention here as well, that are straight to the runway on this site. One of the big items that allowed Spirit Air Systems to actually decide to locate. Transloca facility, something that we have brought up here in the past two months, actually. We're not an asset just for our small business area, 2,500 acres or 1,500 acres. We're an asset for the entire eastern North Carolina. If it's more efficient for you to be able to ship goods and services in or out by rail, because you can fit four truckloads into one railcar, if that helps you compete, helps you to keep jobs here and ease narrow margins to do better, you can come to our asset and we'll help you be more competitive all across eastern North Carolina. And also the road improvements. Let's not discount, with your great assistance and leadership, the Southwest Bypass, the Felix Harvey Parkway from that distance, which is literally gonna connect around Aiden, close to that area, where you're gonna have high-speed connectivity, interstate connectivity from Raleigh to Greenville, all the way over to Highway 70, which will be I-42. This quad-east loop that we all talked about before is coming together way faster than I ever anticipated. That has tremendous ramifications for talking about going to Greenville, Spartanburg, and other areas, how we're laying the groundwork to be able to get that done. Here's a better overall view, if you want to take a look at the site itself. The runway, 1,500, excuse me, 11,500 acres. This is the second-longest runway in the eastern United States. Seven billion runway, second longest. You can fly directly here from China, anywhere in the world. We're actually working on some commerce opportunities to that degree right now. The dotted line you see is the 5,800-acre 404 permit area that we talked about. There's actually, we're unique, we're set up similar to a municipality in that we have zoning authority over a six-mile circumference around this entire site. And you know, all this really intrigued me when I started looking at it. I said, these elements that were here, why did this never come together before? We all know RTP was what they call a 30-year overnight success, right? You know, it didn't just happen when that farmer was out there plowing the field, a little company called IBM showed up. But I thought of it like you would think of it. Imagine yourself, as you're a commissioner, and someone took you and dropped you in a county that you weren't familiar with. What would be the first thing that you would look at? You know, what's your debt position? You know, what's your tax structure? What's your employees look like? How is your operation set up? Those type of things that we really looked at closely when they asked me to come onboard, put this strategic plan together. So again, 11,500-foot runway, second-longest eastern United States, 22,000 flights last year. We mentioned about the Antonov coming in and out, 112 flights in the past two years. Interstate capacities, which in eastern North Carolina, with the, with the leadership of Secretary Troggen and our legislature and the governor, bipartisan, working across the board to move eastern North Carolina together. There's one thing they may agree on, and that's infrastructure in the eastern and western part of this state. They're rapidly, you saw the built-in... They're rapidly, you saw the Build NC, which recently passed, almost unanimous in state legislature. They're serious about moving infrastructure forward. And obviously, our direct connect to the ports. When I say ports, I don't just mean Wilmington and I don't just mean Morehead City, who we go directly with Spirit Aero Systems in Morehead on a weekly basis. I'm also talking about Norfolk and Charleston. You have to erase county lines, you have to erase state lines, erase municipal lines, because what I found as people work from all over the eastern half of this state to be able to work at this facility and also to work in Pitt County, how can we do this better together? So our asset itself, we have 1,420 employees, we have 12 tenants. Well, I have 11 staff mentors. I basically have a football team over there working with us. It's a pretty big asset. And seven or eight of them all wear a blue shirt every day with their name on it. And they're handling our fire suppression, they're handling our maintenance, they're bringing aircraft in, our security, jack-of-all-trades. I have a very, very razor-sharp staff over here, which we're working to continue to build up. So 90% of our folks working over there are all working in private sector jobs and wages that are 34% higher than the eastern North Carolina average and 29% higher than the Lenore County average. And as I began my analysis with the strategic plan, this is a key chart I wanted to show you guys. Now, I'm not just coming to visit with you, it's great to see y'all. It's good to be home. I'm going to all 14 counties in this region. I'm going to the 14 or 15 or 16 major cities in eastern North Carolina, because you deserve to know what's happening with this key asset for the future of eastern North Carolina. I don't know if that's ever been done before, but for us to work together, we all need to know what we're doing so we can find areas where we can work together and to maximize these opportunities. The chart you see here is 21 counties, what I call this quad-east area. And what you see here is, I ran the numbers on our largest employer, we ran their ZIP code. Where do these people live? They get a paycheck every day. They live in over 21 counties across the eastern half of the state and actually a couple up in two Virginia. But you guys may have known this, but this really kind of, you know, really kind of hit home for me, because I know people get in a van every day and drive to Cherry Point, you know, as a group. Some drive to Raleigh every day and go to work out of this community. This is what we do in eastern North Carolina. We know that we're this ecosystem, this fabric. So what happens in Lenore County matters to Pitt County. What happens in Hyde County matters to Pitt County. All these pieces come in together because we want these rural communities to be able to stand up on their own and have their tax base, so they're not all just moving here. So a quick overview of the area, you guys know this, the military, the ports, universities, the commerce, the rail, the future interstates, all in the map to your left. All of these things, tremendous assets, many parts of the country wish they had. The map to the right is what we call the elastic mile. What really matters is from your asset and what I'm finding and putting the strategic plan together, how quick can you get to the major air corridors? How quick can you connect these other major hubs where major cargo is happening? And actually, we are very well positioned, not just for our location, but for the tremendous, one time, this is one time where your lack of activity is an advantage. Our capacity is tremendous. And we're currently working with two or three of the largest cargo folks in the world to work towards increasing this capacity and bring some opportunities here. We're a foreign trade zone, which Pitt County's a part of, foreign trade zone 214. We're a magnet site here. Significant advantages, US workers can put together components and parts here, components that could be imported or exported without tax until they're a final product. Largest two employers that we mentioned, Spirit Aero Systems up top. If you haven't been here, I invite you as a commission to come visit, see the scale of this facility. You know, we've had Ann from the city and some others to come over. They're building the Airbus A350 jetliner here. You know, workers right here in eastern North Carolina, the entire center fuselage of these aircraft and the wing spars. They're building it right here in eastern North Carolina around 10 to 12 a month. Tremendous, tremendous resources and shipping that all over the world. Also, the longest tenant is Mountain Air Cargo. They do most of the maintenance and rehabilitation on the MRO fleets, excuse me, the FedEx fleets and the United fleets, right here in eastern North Carolina and continue to expand as we can expand those operations as well. This is one key one I want to mention too. I recently met with Dr. Massey's team and also with the other community colleges around us. We feel the next big watershed moment is the F-35. What's going to happen at Seymour Johnson in Wayne County and what's going to happen over in Craven County with the F-35s as well, with the Marine Corps Air Station in Lejeune and around us. You have to think beyond, we're playing chess here, not checkers. It's great that these aircraft are going to locate in those locations, but guess what? They're going to need skilled labor for maintenance, for components. We want to invite the supply chain. South Carolina has kicked our rear end in what Greenville-Spartanburg has done and what Charleston has done and understanding the bigger picture of, it's not just about a pretty aircraft. Who's going to do the maintenance and repair? Who's going to build the next aircraft? This is our opportunity to take this military skilled workforce. We need to be the best in the nation at bringing this skilled workforce to stay here in eastern North Carolina. 18,000 exiting military every year. They need to live in Pitt County and Lenore and Wayne and stay here. And I'm going to work with the UNC system and also with the community college system. We have some aces up our sleeve. We're going to work to be able to make us the best in the nation at doing this. Training and innovation. We have a living and breathing community college apparatus right at the Trans Park itself. Lenore has their Advanced Manufacturing Academy for job growth, technology investment and productivity enhancement. STEM East Network across the eastern part of our state. It's not just about military folks that we want to recruit here. We want our third, fourth and fifth graders, our young kids, when they're bright and looking for opportunity, to get them understanding that math and technology is their future and doesn't matter if they grew up in a one-room shack or the nicest neighborhood. Education's a great equalizer. Never forget that. And obviously, we're working closely now with East Carolina, so proud of that, with the interns and working with Jay Golden, what he's doing with innovation, the Millennial Center and NC State. Matter of fact, I'm converting the old terminal over there right now, the Trans Park. We had some significant damage back in January during that freezing spell that we had that burst water all over the facility. Sometimes chaos breeds opportunity. Now that's being rebuilt, we're not building it back to a '70s airport terminal. We're taking 80% of it and turning that into an innovation hub. We're going to host seven or eight companies that are in aerospace and business. We're going to bring them in for a period at our cost, have them set up shop and bring jobs and opportunity and maybe grow something that might expand into Pitt County or Lenore or Craven or Wayne in this region. So again, strategic planning process, that was a big part of my last year. We'll run through this fairly quickly, but I had all the stakeholders we could pull together across, not just North Carolina, but across the country. And not a political process, this was something that needed to be vetted from the private sector. I'm not sure that's ever been done here before. There's been 11 directors of the Global Trans Park, something that I saw. There was never continuity, there was never a clear strategy. So whether I win or lose or what we do, there's going to be a clear strategy. There's going to be a clear plan. And from a military standpoint, those are the type of folks that I work for and they demand that with the legislature and others, and we're going to keep continuing that moving forward. Cluster analysis, here's some of the results of the strategic plan I wanted to show you guys. Very excited about this. You can't aim where you are. You've got to aim where you're going if you're going to bring jobs and economy. And when we can't get lazy here in our part of the area, either in Greenville or other areas, understand this economy is morphing and changing. So the blue map you see here, that is the census tracts over 14 counties and what are the opportunities in industry? What makes us unique? Where can we grow? The grid chart to the left shows you the four quadrants of, the lower left is kind of the mature and kind of waning industries, the upper left is the mature and opportunities there with biopharma. The right are the emerging areas. So we have to aim where we're going. So working with Ted Abernathy, who was great in this, our strategic planning process along with experts all over the world that helped with our planning, they really punched holes in our asset and said, you don't have this, this and this. You've got to get this. You can't compete right now. If you're going to do that, you've got to bring these things together. And also, these are the markets that we need to be going after. So after much research over the past year, here are our four focus areas. Aerospace and automotive, the defense industry, agribusiness and food science and government hub. Many of us don't realize this, we know what Hurricane Matthew, how devastating that was. I didn't even know this, over 1,200 first responders spent the better part of two weeks at the Global Trans Park. It is a hardened facility. They were rescuing people, these first responders, from the Virginia line all the way down to Wilmington out of this asset. So we feel there's a real calling. There will be another storm, there will be another hurricane. So how can we be prepared as a hub? We're looking on a public-private sector to make, making this a hub for first response, even all the way down to Puerto Rico, the entire east coast, and bring those jobs and opportunity here. Agribusiness, it goes without saying. There's a model in California, the UC Davis model, which we are working closely, we think is a huge opportunity. We're not just a breadbasket here in eastern North Carolina. We also need to be the productive basket, to bring those productive jobs here, not shipping them to the Midwest or to the Northeast. So excited about these opportunities. I mentioned the strategic plan. Most important piece of this document is the 114, if you look on page 41, you'll see this, is the 114-pointed action plan. A strategic plan, the day you build this is obsolete. And if you let it sit on the shelf, it's going to be dust. We decided not to do that. Like I mentioned to the legislature, we want to be held accountable. Here are 114 things that we're telling you that this is what we're going to do. Here are the items, the strategy, the tactic, the sub-tactic. Here's our success measure for each sub-tactic. Here's our planning horizon, how we're going to get this done for you to come and reevaluate and moving our region forward. And this also doesn't just involve our asset, it involves working together as a region. So our strategic plan objectives, implement a proactive marketing plan, improve and maintain existing Global Trans Park assets, working, draw from regional strengths. We are stronger together. We know that. We have to work together across this region. That's how other parts of the world are competing. It's not, you know, one small town in Germany against a small town in another part of Germany. They understand the regional concept. We've got to come forward with that. Identifying plan for the needs of our targeted opportunities, continue workforce training and aim for the future. So recent achievements, I want to mention to you guys, you know, this past year, while we've been doing a lot of planning, we've hit the ground running. We've had over 72 million of investment in the Trans Park in the past 12 months. And I think that's rather remarkable. We had Spirit Aero Systems with a huge investment. You know, and 85% of this has all been large private sector investment. That's the most investment in over a decade in this facility. And it's all about standing this up to be able to recruit and have opportunity here. So we talked through most of this already, but the investment, you know, the mega site status, we're hosting the larger, the drone and unmanned science and technology, huge opportunity around the world. We want to lead that technology in eastern North Carolina. The state is going to designate the Trans Park, we hope, as the sole source site for all drone commercial activity, all testing and enterprise growth, to put them in our innovation center. So we'll continue to move forward. Want to show this to you real quick. I mentioned to you about the website itself. First thing we did is, for your community, you've got to put a face on it. It can't just be about flat buildings and concrete. You've got to put a face on your community. I'm pitching East Carolina. I'm pitching Seymour Johnson. I'm pitching New Bern. I'm pitching this region because families want to live, they want to know the quality of life across the region. It's not just about the drill down into GIS data and all these extremely important things about where our company locates. There's a soft side of this, which we all know, which is extremely important, being able to locate companies here across the east. We have a huge advantage, my commissioners, I'm going to tell you, we have a huge advantage across the east and if we work together on a strategy, there's nothing that we can't accomplish here. Again, eastern North Carolina, that's our secret weapon, quality of life and tremendous people. So with your help and working together, let's get our goals coordinated and do great things. So many times we get called up in what I call our echo chamber, what's happening right around me, that we miss out on the bigger opportunity. So I'm not going to do that. That's why I'm going to be in every county around, whenever you want me, wherever you want me to be, I'm going to be there and we're going to continue to try to grow this part of the state, because I'm excited about what I want my five-year-old to be able to talk about. Maybe he wants to work in aerospace, he can live right here, maybe in Greenville or Vanceboro and have a future here. So that's the end of my presentation. I just want to thank you all for giving me a few minutes. And Scott, you know me, I'm sure I went over my 10 minutes. But I hope this painted a good vision of what's happening with this asset and the opportunities we have across eastern North Carolina together. And it's so wonderful to see great champions across this state. While we have debate on other items, when it comes to the future of our children and opportunities, there is no debate. I am standing hand in hand with our leadership across this state, because we're going to get it done and we're going to get it done together. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We appreciate your presentation. Very interesting, continued to good work and we hope we can be an integral part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Scott.
Next on your agenda, you have a procurement policy amendment. This came before your last meeting on June 18th. We have additional revisions that had been requiring by the federal government and Brian Barnett is going to briefly discuss those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. At our last meeting, we did come to you and ask you to amend our procurement policy to allow us to get us in compliance with the federal government's uniform guidance. We had to have it in place by July the 1st and we were able to get it in place by June 26th. Also, in the time since our meeting, the federal government updated their requirements for their, they call it their micro purchase in simplified acquisition thresholds. Basically, they increase the dollar thresholds in their categories of what we are required to do in our procurement policy. We have adjusted our policy to reflect theirs so that we are in compliance in the event that we do have to purchase anything with federal funding.
Anything else?
Yes, need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
I put my hand up.
Thank you, sir.
There it is, there it is.
Sorry.
Okay, next you have your report on recycling in Pitt County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Each year, all local governments are required to report, prepare an annual report and send to the state on our data of trash and recycling. The state compiles this data and ranks states or counties by per capita. And I'm proud to report to you that this past year, Pitt County ranked third in overall recycling and fourth in household recycling. For the past 10 years, since I've been here, we've ranked in the top five. That means that we're doing the right thing in recycling, but just wanted to let you know this. Can't do this by ourselves. ECVC is a big part of this. All the municipalities are a big part of this. And we continue to find better ways to do things with our waste instead of putting it in a landfill. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Wouldn't expect to be number one.
We were a couple of years ago. Next year, I'm hoping.
Anything else? Not next. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, next your last audit report is concerning the conversion economic study that has been a joint effort with Pitt County, the city of Greenville, Greenville Utilities and the Committee 100. Would like to first recognize that we do have an audience this morning. Tony Cannon, the CEO of Greenville Utilities, Spence Cosby, the chairman of the Committee 100, and Wallace, the city manager, just stepped out, but I think she'll be starting back in. This report is just to kind of update you as to where we are with the study. You received in your weekly info packet last week, a report, a letter from conversion as well as a feasibility study that has been prepared by the consultant conversion regarding a proposed public-private partnership for economic development in Pitt County to basically take how we are, the success we've had with economic development and proposing a new model to hopefully even make us more successful. The, as you're aware, there were input sessions, I think back in April, there was probably about 10 different input sessions were held at the Greenville Hilton. Letters went out to every group in Pitt County that we could think of in terms of municipal leaders, ECU Vidant Chamber, Board of Commissioners, just Committee 100, industrial leaders, having folks come in and give input to conversion regarding economic development in terms of the things they'd like to see and also to hear a draft, a very draft draft document that conversion had put together in terms of the community's response and reaction to that. From that conversion is taken from those input sessions is further refined this feasibility document. And what was given to you last week is that proposed feasibility study. And that was also given to the members of the Committee 100, Greenville City Council and the Greenville Utilities Commission. I think from there, it's even probably been dispersed further. I think the Pitt County Development Commission has received a copy as well now. This is still a draft document, it's not a finished document yet. What, there's a schedule I want to pass out that is being on the study that is being followed. And as I talk and as that's passed around, want to let you know, when you agreed to participate in the study, you asked for us to have involvement of the other nine municipalities and we are doing that. And Wallace and myself have been meeting with the managers one-on-one to initiate initial discussion, getting their buy-in, hearing their needs, trying to see how they can fit into this overall strategy for a countywide revised economic development effort. can fit into this overall strategy for a countywide revised economic development effort. So, on this schedule here, you have, the 6/22 date was really last week when the memo or the information went out to you that was in your weekly info packet, today's date, county commissioner update. The July 10th date, letters out, the next step that conversion is going to take is, they're going to send out letters to 80-plus or minus private sector leaders in the community and do an initial interview with them to see if, from a public private partnership aspect from the private sector, would they be willing to step up and fund privately this effort. I think the document that was passed out has a goal of a million dollars, times five years, $5 million, to test the waters to see. They're not asking them to write a check. They're not asking them to sign a commitment card. They're just going to have a conversation based upon what is in this draft feasibility study or plan, per se, would they be interested. From there, the interviews will start on July the 30th. Anticipate interviews being done by August 17th. And then the, August 20th says, start feasibility study. That's basically, I think, refining the feasibility study that you have before you. On September 5th, we have feasibility studies completed and presented. We have, then on September 10th, we've come to the county commissioners in this venue, city council on the same date. And then on the 11th, there's been a presentation to the Committee 100 and the Greenville Utilities Board. The, along with this, there'd be a presentation, and the Development Commission would have, obviously, input as well in this plan. As this conversion phase of the work moves forward, and while Spence Cosby, Tony Cannon, and myself meet to, as we work with conversion, there's also a, another parallel track of this, and that is the governance piece to the new organization, the public-private partnership. The, we as a group have engaged creative economic consulting services out of Greenville to assist in that. And they are helping us come up with a proposed model. And this is very rough at this point in time in terms of how this public-private partnership would be envisioned, in terms of how the city, how the county, how the Greenville Utilities, all the economic development staff would be, come under one roof, under one organization, answering to one board. And then how, who they would, in terms of their employment benefits, whether they would survive as county employees, city employees, GUC employees, in terms of, you know, health insurance, retirement, and so forth. So, with that, that's kind of where we are. We, the end date of this, what is being proposed, would be a July 1, 2019 implementation date to launch this, assuming that the interviews that are, the informal interviews that will be conducted coming up with the private sector yield the results that are hoped for in terms of the private sector funding. If there's not private sector funding, then this model of public-private partnership obviously is missing one of the three legs of the stool. The county, obviously, would be putting money in it via the current funding we have for the economic development. The city likewise, GUC likewise. The surviving, this would be proposed to be a 501(c)(3) organization, and we would be using what is proposed, would be to use the 501(c)(3) of the Committee 100 that it currently has in transitioning into that organization. Ann, Tony, or Spence, anything, any point I missed here? So, this is just an update to let you know, as we move forward, there's nothing carved in stone, but I will say the process is moving forward. We'll have more information coming back to you on governance. We'll have more information coming back to you in the fall regarding feasibility study and the response of the private sector in terms of the fundraising aspect of the conversations and what the response to these conversations as conversion goes out on the behalf of the group.
Who exactly are you interviewing?
60 to 80 different community, private sector leaders, and industry heads and whatnot. And folks that we would, we have yet to sit down to go over that list of names, but we're, we'll be doing that very soon to identify those names and make sure that-
Would Alan Thomas be one of them?
Oh, absolutely. You can get his checkbook out.
This is an integral part of growth, which, there's a lot of work going into it. All of you know that, by the various different groups and agency. Ann, do you want to critique anything that he said this morning?
Of course not.
Appreciate you being here, and Spencer, and we always, as we do, Mayor Thomas. But that having been said, is there any further discussion on it, Tom?
Well, I read this, and I probably have two dozen questions. Just to give you a couple of them, would be, who is the staffing going to be made up of? What kind of salaries are we talking about? If there's a city-county investment from, as far as our involvement with jobs and stuff, is that part of the $5,350,000 budget? When it says it wants to have 2,750 jobs, I'm concerned about that because the Development Commission, in the past, I'm not saying now, but I know in the past, when Vermont American, where I worked for, had 192 employees that went to 450, they were glad to take the credit for those job increases, and they had zero to do with it. When Vermont American closed and those 425, 50 jobs were gone, there was nothing that reduces it. So, when they say they're going to create 2,750 new jobs, how are they going to get an accurate count? Or are they going to use that same old premise that any job created, they take credit for? Also, you've got to look at it from the standpoint that even if they reach their goal, it's $1,900 plus for each one of the jobs that's created. Anyway, I could go on and on and on. I have a whole lot of questions. So, how do my questions get into this mix so that somebody understands that, you know, I'd like some answers. Because when you come up in September and you make a presentation, and you expect me to make a decision, I don't think that that meeting, within just a few minutes, you're going to be able to answer all the questions that I have posted on every single page that I've read through this.
Now that you've got the feasibility study, if you'll put those, if you'll provide those questions to me, I'll present them to the group. We will hash through those. Also wanted just to mention that all the, all the current employees, whether city, county, GUC, they've been informed that everybody will have a job in the new organization. Nobody goes away. Now, what they do may be retooled, re-functioned. The executive director of the Development Commission, Wanda Uhos, has announced her retirement intentions for the spring of 2019. So, the organization, the, this new board will be looking at doing advertising and recruiting for a director of the group. Whether that comes internally from one of the employees within the organizations or externally, that'll be up to the new board. Also, one of the points I made to the Development Commission in speaking with them recently was that the current model that we're working with is based upon legislation that was approved by the North Carolina General Assembly in 1958, 60 years ago. And I posed to them, I asked them, how many of us are doing business like we did, not to say that we're doing it wrong, but 50 or 60 years ago, under that model? Again, I think we can build upon our successes and do things and see more, more success based upon a revised model, and that's what we're proposing here. So, if any of the commissioners will provide me your questions or comments, I'll be happy to take those back, and we will then try to answer those as we go along. Again, you haven't even seen the governance model piece. That'll be coming forth. We'll be presenting that as well in the future.
Scott, when do you need those by? I'm going to be kind of tied up for the next, actually, 14 days because after Tennessee, I'm going to Atlanta.
If you can get the next three weeks, it's fine.
Okay, all right. That's good enough. Plenty of time. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
I think some of the questions that Tom proposed, you don't have the answer to yet.
I'm sure.
That is to be developed.
Yes.
That's my point. I want, I want them to put that into that mix.
Some of the things will be up, I mean, not all the things, but there will be some details up to the new partnership or alliance, we're calling it, the Pitt County Development Alliance Board, if and when approved by all of the individuals involved, organizations.
Anything further on this at this time? Not, do we have a motion for consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Let's vote.
I get it. I was laughing at Mary. I was laughing at Mary, and I did it.
I had no idea.
Habits are hard to break.
Ann, how we go?
I pressed it, but just-
Okay, now, next start of business being, uh...
Woodmore Farm subdivision.
No, we got the-
Woodmore Farm subdivision.
What's that?
Oh, that's what we've done.
Woodmore Farm subdivision street.
James is on, I mean, he knows where we're going. Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quickly, we just have a few items for your consideration today, following the approval of the final assessment resolution at the July 18th meeting. The first item, of course, is talking a little bit about the financing. A lot of this information's in your package today. As we discussed, we have one sole bidder on this project, and this, the total bid amount, including contingency, including a turnaround at one of the streets, end of one of the streets, is over $542,000. So, to get to this point, you may recall there were funds set aside several years ago, $220,000, to be specific, in the street paving funds. And a lot of that still remains because it was not used for Woodmore subdivision, which is an adjacent subdivision that was completed last year. So, there was some left in the fund itself. There was also some additional funds left over from the Woodmore project. We had moved it into a special line. Those funds still remain. So, all total, those are the funds that are going into this. So, today, we're asking for an appropriation of over $429,000 from the general fund to get this project initiated, to start the construction here. And there are a couple of other items that kind of fall in line with this. Number two would also be to adopt a reimbursement resolution to pay back that general fund allocation, and then finally approve the contract to Carolina Earth Movers for the set amount of over $542,000. Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure, Board. Ms. Wood-
I'll make a motion that we concur with the staff recommendation to approve the budget amendment, as well as the reimbursement resolution and the contract with the Carolina Earth Movers. Is that it?
Second. Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion.
What about the interest? I had brought up two things in the past. One had to do with, let's say, somebody was fortunate enough to be able to prepay. Can they avoid all the interest if they prepay? And also, is this, is the $114,000 or whatever it was that was left over, is that going to be interest-free?
Yes. The intent of $114,000 would be, that portion of the, it would be interest-free for each of the affected, as it's allocated among all the parcels, that would be interest-free. The balance would have the interest on it. The, in terms of the payment, if they want to pay early, we are working on the details of that. We do anticipate that they pay upfront within, say, the first 30 days is one thing that Brian Barnett and I have talked about is, that they could pay without interest. But then thereafter, once we get that set, the set schedule for the remaining years, it would be with interest. So, if they're able to pay initially-
But what if they can pay it off in three years? So, you're saying that by the third year, they've got to pay 10 years' worth of interest?
Brian, you want to come up?
If that's the case, I'm going to vote against this.
With the way this policy reads right now, there's nothing in place that would even have the 30-day period or three-year period.
I understand that, but that's why I'm asking this question, because it should be, if people want to prepay, they should not be saddled with interest charge because essentially, the county would be making money off of that. And is that the purpose of us, to make money off this? I don't think so.
We'll be paying interest over the 10-year period.
Not if you, not if you prepay. And I cannot imagine, with the wisdom of the people and county government, that you would go out there to get anything other than a loan that has got a, an agreement that you can prepay it without penalty. We would be damn dumb to do that if we, if we were to get something that was not like that. I can't-
Well, in this particular case, this particular loan would be lumped in with other projects because it's nearly impossible to get a bank loan on a street improvement project because we don't have any collateral to put it on the project.
Then you need to figure out a way to do it. That's why you're here. That's why you get paid the big bucks. I will not vote for this if people are going to be penalized with interest. It's bad enough they got to pay the interest. It's bad because of the fact that there are, how many other subdivisions out there that got this same problem? And yeah, I know that we county commissioners can't step up and take on all of this, but this has been caused by builders that are shirking their responsibility, plain and simple. I wish that there was a law that stated that, that when somebody dies, that this is a debt that they must fulfill. Their estate must fulfill, but there's nothing in there. Of course, then you got the bankruptcy, and then you walk away from that. But the people bought these places in good faith. They expected the builders to honor what they needed to do. And I don't agree with the DOT's requirement that they got to have a, what is it, 75 or 80% build-out before they can even apply. Because that means you can go out there, you can get a subdivision that could have 200 homes in it, only build out 25 or 30 of them, and not complete the project, and those people are stuck. The state of North Carolina needs to do something other than to undermine something that we did here in the county that wouldn't have helped all these past ones. Of course, you were a part of it, where we went out there, we wanted to have some kind of a guarantee for the builders. And what bugs me is that the, is that the North Carolina Builders, Home Builders Association blocked this. They went to the legislature, and they were one of the primary reasons that they gutted our ordinance. I wonder who got paid for that? Yeah, I could go on for an hour on this, and I know I digress, but this is a big, big problem. And for us to sit back and say, well, we got to lump this in with everything else, do we really? I don't think so. You can find the mechanism. You have computers. There are ways of breaking it out. If somebody can prepay in 10 years or three years, they should not have to pay the full interest for the 10-year loan. And we can sit back and say, well, it's not a loan. Effectively, it is. I'm through ranting, Mr. Chairman.
Keep on going, Tom. Hit all you want to. Any further discussion? We've got a motion made in second, by way of discussion, though.
All I want to say is that the county, when we started this, we were trying very hard to help these subdivisions because of exactly what Tom has stated. And as we have progressed, it has gotten more expensive, and sometimes it takes a longer time for a group to come on board. And it has caused some, some of the problems like Tom is speaking to. But I still think the benefit for the neighborhood is something that I still support. So, I'm ready to vote.
All right, Ms. Wood.
Mr. Chair.
Wait, Ann, I believe Ann, you had your hand up first.
Yes.
Then Mary.
Let me see if I understand what we're going to be voting on. And I heard Brian say that there's nothing in, in place to give a interest-free for any length of time. So, is it possible to put something in place for, to give that, if, if a person wants to pay upfront, let's say, the first 90 days?
So, the, so the three action, three items on the agenda, the motion includes, does not include the assessment procedure of how they'll pay, what they'll pay in terms of interest. We'll bring that forth back to you. And I guess if the Board would like, we can bring you more than one option. If we need to amend the policy per that, we'll bring back recommendations to do that. Today, the policy says that you may charge interest. So, under what terms and conditions, we haven't defined on this, but we will develop that. And Brian, are you good to press bring it back?
Mr. Chairman, I, based on what Scott says, that I'm, I'm prepared to vote no right now. Not because I'm against the develop, or doing this. It needs to be done. All I'm asking is that we be reasonable and treat the people, I mean, their tax bills are going to more than double for 10 years.
But isn't that what Scott said, that we would come back with that? Because right now, this doesn't include that.
But there's no guarantee, Beth, what's going to happen then. If I vote for this, you can say, oh, well, you voted for it.
And it's passed.
Yeah, it's passed. And, and let's say nothing gets done. Well, it'll still be, nothing gets done.
So, I guess your options are to-
I want to guarantee that there's going to be something put in place.
To treat this as, once the project is complete, we know the final cost, option A, I guess it would be to allow folks to pay it off with no penalty of any interest within, like I said, a 30-day period.
I don't like that.
Or option B.
What if it takes them three years to pay? I pay, I buy a car, it costs me $400. I pay $1,000 a month. I'm able to do that. At the end of it, I don't end up having to pay the rest of the interest for the loan.
Right. So, option B, if we treat this as a conventional bank loan, per se, where if you did pay it off, if you had the ability, you came into some money within year five of a 10-year period, Brian, is that a possibility that we can handle that in-house to track each of the parcels using financial software, per se?
We can do it in-house on an individual parcel basis to track it, to see what the each individual homeowner would have left to pay on the total cost of the project. The current policy also states that we cannot use county money once we have reimbursed ourselves back. So, we'd have to literally track it, each house, each bill, to make sure we're not putting additional county money into the project.
Good.
I'm all for that.
My pleasure, Board.
Do we need to include that in the motion?
Yeah.
Well, is that what you're planning on doing then, Scott?
If that's how you direct us.
Well, it's not in this motion, so I'll vote no.
But we can put it in the motion.
We have been have it in the motion.
The, we're getting a nod from the finance director that it's a possibility.
The motions today are to approve the budget amendment, to allow us to enact the contract. What, what you're talking about now, would not, would that not come on the...
I think they're saying they're not comfortable approving these three motions without knowing how the, each property owner will be treated with the interest portion of the project.
Yes. Could we, could we include that you will come back with that?
Yes, because I can't tell you what each property owner's going to have to pay until we have finished the project.
But is it a commitment that that's the way it's going to be if we agree to this?
If that's how your motion reads, it would be a commitment to do it that way.
If you want to add that to the...
Add it to the motion.
Amend the motion.
I will add it to the motion since I made it.
And Jimmy's second.
It's obvious to me that this is getting way more complicated than we had intended for it to be. I still work on the premise that this should not cost the county any money. That was our premise at the beginning, because if we start letting the county pay for part of this, then we're going to establish a precedent for everybody else that wants the county to pay. So I think that, I, I personally don't think we need to take any action today until we know exactly what the specifics are that we will be voting for, and at this point in time, we don't know that. Because if we vote for the recommendation, as is in our agenda package, that excludes the concern that Tom has, and I don't think we need to vote for that until we get...
I agree.
...the total motion clear, so that we all understand what we are voting for. And Tom, frankly, I agree with you. If a person wants to pay off early, they should be able to pay off early, and it should not cost them any interest other than what they are liable to pay for. And the other statement that was made, something about we are charging interest, the county is not charging interest. We are only asking for reimbursement of the interest that the bank is charging us. So I would, in fact, I would even move that we delay action on this until our next meeting.
Well, now, which motion's going to take precedence?
What about the contract with the Carolina...
That's a substitute motion, Jimmy.
Are we, where are we with the contract for the people who are going to start to work?
The thing is, we're in a tight timeframe as far as the paving months, so we're looking at a five-month contract. We're already running through the end of this year if we start work in early August. So we're going to start running into the winter months, and just know that that could be a little, any, any delay here today, especially if it drags on two weeks or another month, it could really pose a, a problem in getting the project completed this calendar year.
Just this part.
Could cause the price to go up?
Again, we've got a certain, Tim, what's the amount of time we've got to enter the contract?
Well, as, as you know, the contractor wrote us a letter that decreased their price by a percentage, and in that letter, they actually gave us 30 days within that to execute that. So I guess technically, the contractor could say that that reduction would no longer be acceptable. I don't, I don't know that.
Beth changed, Beth changed her motion to include what my concerns are.
But I'll change it back, because what you're concerned about, we're going to speak to later. Is that correct?
There's no guarantee, but that's not enough guarantee.
And you can still vote against it if you want to, Tom. But I feel like we need, we have discussed this, we, we have told the Woodmore people that we support this. I, I just think it has to go back to the original motion, that we approved these three things that are in our motion in our minutes, and that's my motion.
So you didn't change your motion?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Who seconded the best motion?
Jimmy.
I did.
All right, and you've had about 35 minutes of discussion. Let's vote up. If Tom wants to vote against, let him vote against it. Let's vote on the motion. All right, what's the next, Mr. Manus?
James Rhodes on the CDBG project.
Go ahead, James.
Mr. Chairman, again, another project, construction project of sorts, is our Candlewick Sewer Project. Just to bring you up to date, we're coming real close to the end of this project, and you know, we got funding back in 2013, or that's what it's labeled. We really didn't start in earnest until 2015, and we've been working hard to make sure this is a reality. So just a few pictures, if you haven't been by there lately. It did require some road improvement processes out here. This is Chatham Way that was pretty much ripped up as part of the project and laying the sewer lines in. You can see the manhole kind of in the middle of the road here, and also some fine grating in some people's yards where some of the other lines were run through. The good news is, the paving contractor's been out there. You can see now, we've got a new black asphalt laid on top. They're doing some fine grating along the ditch banks now, so that's moving along. Also, this is the pump station, this readily visible right along Stanton'sburg Road. Lot of work going into this, additional fine grating along the front there, along Stanton'sburg Road. Tremendous amount of electrical work, and also, we have some natural gas running online for our infamous backup pump here that's been delivered. We thought this was going to pose a delay for us. Actually, it's been delivered and installed, and just got word this morning, we'll be looking at testing this this Thursday. So this is all to say, we're in the short rows now. What we need is a public hearing at your August 6 meeting for a program amendment, and there's a couple of reasons for that. We have to do some budget work to shuffle some things around. It may be a call savings for the county, and I say may again, may be a call savings. Hold that public hearing on August 6. We'll also be asking for August 20 public hearing for hopefully the grant closeout, and we would hold that on August 20. We need those minutes approved on September 10, and all this needs to be into the state, the Division of Water Infrastructure by October 2, and hopefully we'll close out. We did have a monitoring visit a couple of weeks ago. All went well there, so the money's in good order right now, and we're in compliance. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can get the public hearing set for your next meeting, and we'll bring those program amendments to you then.
Have a motion for that. Let's vote.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Next, you have appointments to the ABC Board. There's a...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend Glenn Webb.
I'd like to second that motion.
Let's vote.
Okay, next, you have the appointment of animal cruelty investigators, as listed on page 93. This is a procedural item that comes before you annually.
A motion from the Board.
Motion to approve those four names mentioned on page 93.
Second.
All right, ready to vote. Next.
Okay, next, you have closed session. If the county attorney will lead us into that.
Madam Attorney?
Yes, it has been suggested this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1183, Attorney Client Privilege, A6 Personnel, and A1 to review the content of closed session minutes.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right. Need to vote?
Yes, please.
All right. Next. Everybody out? Everybody out? Thank you. We're back in session. In the further business from the board?
Chairman, I'd like to take a motion to approve the June 18 closed session.
Second. All right, let's vote. In the further business at this time?
We're adjourned.
Nope, not yet. Wait, wait, wait.
If we're adjourned, I think...
Wait, Beth.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Let's start out here with Ann. Come this way and comment.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say that I was honored to present to the Epps Alumni Association at their Saturday Business Meeting the proclamation on behalf of the board, and I was happy to do that. In that meeting, I just want to announce that there were 11 scholarships presented to the students who graduated this past year. So, and that was our 39th reunion. We're looking forward to next year, to the Big 40s.
Thank you, Mr. Guys. Charles?
Yeah, regarding the travel policy, giving that some thought, forced to give that some thought. I think it's a good policy, and if somebody wants to go to some organization that's peripheral to our organization, it should be enforced as it's meant to be. But if it's an organization like NCACC or NACO that we pay dues to, and that person is an officer or has some actual work to do, you know, I think we need to revisit that rule. Okay?
Thank you, Charles. Melvin?
No comments.
None.
I have comments. Today, I'd like to let the board know that we have Ms. April Barrett-Williams, a student at UNCW, who is monitoring a local governmental board for her Policy and Politics class of the Bachelor of Nursing degree. And she's in with us today, and I've asked Kimberly Heinz, since we talked about a policy of travel today, to provide her with a copy of that policy.
She couldn't have picked a better name.
And if she will give her her email address, she will give you a copy of that policy.
Got a copy here if she wants it.
Pardon?
Got a copy here if she wants it.
Okay, we have a copy. The county manager will give you a copy.
Feel free to suggest changes.
Thank you so very much. And Ms. Barrett-Williams is in.
Stand up, ma'am, please. On the behalf of the board, Mary just introduced you and told where you were going to school and all that, but it's always good to have people come in and observe, and when you get back and ponder what we've said and what we have done or have not done, critique us and let us hear from you. And now, no further business. Now, I'm back to Beth. You've got a special duty, Beth.
All I want to do is recognize the fact that we have our clerk back after maternity leave, and Kimberly, we welcome you back, and so glad to have you back, Willers. Jenna did a great job while you were gone, but we missed our Kimberly, so welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I plan to go to Spartanburg on my own.
What, Beth?
I plan to go to Spartanburg on my own. I'm very interested in developments.
Well, bring us a good report back there.
I ain't gonna give you a report, you can. Oh, this is, okay.
Okay, does our motion still stand?
No, you can make them.
Okay, I move for a German.
I second.
All right, let's vote. Let's go. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Abstain.